Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 9th, School Board Meeting, meeting this evening at Shirley High Middle School. I will ask each board member to introduce themselves and their district as part of our roll call. Dr. Chase, can you start us?
Yep. Dr. Chase Falmouth.
Pamela Young, Garrisonville.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood.
Susan Randall, George Washington.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths-Widewater.
Irene Hollerback, Akwaia District.
Tricia Healy, Rock Hill District.
All members are in attendance this night, therefore, and are in the building this evening, so we do not need to have an authorization to participate electronically. Moving on to our next item will be the approval of the agenda, and I'd like to recognize Dr. Chase for a motion.
Yep. Move to approve the agenda with the amendment of moving item 10.03 from consent to information.
Second. Excuse me. It's been moved and seconded. Any comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda as requested and amended by Dr. Chase.
I just noticed that the, let's see, if I can pull this agenda item up, the Band Together Against Hunger, they're here. Is there any way we could do them earlier? Or, I don't know if that's something that they have school tomorrow, or are these other awards and recognitions going to be fairly quick?
I think our awards and recognitions will move fairly quickly, so I think let's just stick with where, how we are, if that's okay. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion, the agenda is approved as amended. So we'll move first to our awards and recognitions as a recognition of our business partners who supported National School Counseling Week. So I would like to recognize Dr. Wilborn.
First, I would like to say thank you to the school board for the recognition of the counselors from last meeting with the reading of the proclamation and the PowerPoint presentation. I'm here this evening to thank the business partners and community members who coordinated with Hunter Berry in the Office of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement to create counselor appreciation bags and provided boxed lunches to over 90 counselors in recognition of National School Counseling Week. National School Counseling Week highlights the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve academic success and plan for their future careers. We thank and recognize Stafford County Public Schools counselors for their commitment to all of our students and families. Thank you to the following businesses and organizations for sponsoring the appreciation bags and box lunches. Aloha Design &amp; Tea, Apple Federal Credit Union, Chick-fil-A Celebrate Virginia, Embrace Treatment, Foster Care, Fredericksburg Guidebook, Gander RV and Outdoors, McDonald's Wellburn Management, Mental Health America of Fredericksburg, the Rappahannock Community Service Board, the Rappahannock Orthodox, Stafford Crossing Community Church, Starbucks at Stafford Marketplace, and the Topside Federal Credit Union. Thank you all for your continued support of our students and staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's always important to recognize our community partners because so many times our community likes to come, wants to come alongside and support the things that we are doing in the community. Our next recognition is our proclamation to recognize Black History Month. So a proclamation to recognize February 2021 as Black History Month. Whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout our American experience. And whereas the history of people of African heritage goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative societies in the history of human existence. And whereas African Americans have played a significant role in the history of the United States, from the early days of the pioneers to our present-day leaders in such industries as aerospace, finance, government, and international trade. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African Americans whose contributions are vast and wide. And whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements that they have made throughout our region. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates the month of February 2021 as Black History Month throughout the school division. We encourage the celebration of the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions of African Americans and encourage participation in educational events honoring the contribution of black Americans adopted by the school board this ninth day of February 2021. And next, I will recognize Dr. Kizner.
And I'm going to recognize the school board. This is February is the Virginia School Board Appreciation Month. Whereas the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built. And whereas locally elected and appointed school boards play an important and vital role in a representative democracy, and decisions made by local boards of education directly influence instruction in Virginia public schools. And whereas these decisions affect the present and future lives of children and also set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, state, national, and global 21st century knowledge economy. And whereas local school board members work with parents, businesses, education professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas this year's theme, 115 Years of Providing Leadership, Advocacy, and Support, reflects the partnership of the Virginia School Board Association with local school board members as they serve their local divisions and advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. And whereas School Board Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to build stronger relationships between the thousands of Virginians who champion the mission of public education and school board members. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Stafford County Public Schools recognize the contributions of Virginia's local school boards to the academic success of public school students and express its sincere recognition to members of the School Board of Stafford County for their focus on the well-being and achievement of children throughout the county. And if we finally proclaim that the Superintendent of Stafford County Public Schools declares February 2021 as School Board Appreciation Month throughout the school division and encourage the school and community leaders to appropriately recognize our county's dedicated and school board members. Everyone in the room, please join me in thanking the school board.
Well, thank you, Dr. Kizner. Moving on to 4.01, one of my favorite topics or favorite agenda items this evening, I'd like to invite our high school drum majors to come forward to tell us about Band Together to Fight Hunger in 2021.
Our five high schools. Why are we calling it nine and a half, you ask? Because the 2020 event was to be our 10th anniversary, and we are hopeful to celebrate that landmark occasion with our community in person next November. Our county band leadership students include Sidney Moorfield, drum major at Brookpoint High School. Sidney was unavailable to join us this evening. Casey Chown and McKenna McConnell, drum majors at Colonial Forge High School. Brooke Chambliss, drum major at Mountain View High School. Morgan Mallory and Luke Madison, drum majors at North Stafford High School. And Erin Wallace and Alex Kennedy, drum majors at Stafford High School. These outstanding musicians have a special message for you and our community this evening.
We are here tonight to cordially invite each of you to join us on Monday evening, March 29th at 7:00 PM for our special edition of Band Together to Fight Hunger. This special virtual event will be livestreamed on the Stafford County Public Schools YouTube channel with performances past and present and interviews with students, directors, alumni, and special guests. We hope you join us and band together to help our community during this unusual time.
Band Together to Fight Hunger is an exciting showcase of talented musicians from our five high schools. This event is the only time this year where you will have the opportunity to hear and see all five high school marching bands in concert and give back to our community at the same time. Our event supports the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, which services the counties in which our fellow students, faculty, and support staff reside in. Stafford, Spautavina, Caroline, King George, Locust Grove, and the city of Fredericksburg. Non-perishable food donations will be collected at all Stafford County school sites and certain commercial partners in our area. Food collection sites will begin accepting donations beginning March 1st and can be found on the Band Together to Fight Hunger social media accounts. Monetary donations are gladly accepted through our new online donation page you can find from the Band Together social media pages or by mailing a check to bandtogether@mountainviewhighschool. Last year, with the support of our business partners and attendees, we were able to provide over 46,000 meals to our surrounding communities, and in the midst of this pandemic, the need This year, Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank is seeing more of our neighbors than ever. It's the many parents who have lost or had a reduction in hours. It's their children going to bed on an empty stomach. It's retired seniors unable to afford groceries, but we can help if we, as a community, band together to fight hunger. The food bank reports a 70% increase in demand for nutritious food since the beginning of the pandemic. This means that they are serving close to 13,000 people every month.
The Food Bank Store, the Food Bank is a storehouse for food and other products collected. From there, donations are distributed to our local pantry programs and are given directly to people in our communities. By partnering with the Food Bank, we can reach more people in need through our connections with school pantry programs, mobile pantry program sites, after-school snack programs, food-for-life and commodity supplement food programs, Fresh Connection agencies, and other community partners and local food pantries. It is incredible that we can touch the lives of so many of our neighbors by giving back for just one night.
In Stafford County alone, the Food Bank has 46 network partners and is serving over 6,500 people or 1,600 families. Recently, the Food Bank was able to access a COVID-responsive enhancement grant to its Stafford County partners in providing items to help them safely and effectively distribute needed items to our community. Stafford County also has four locations for direct distribution with a mobile pantry or drop-off. These are just a few examples of how the Food Bank supports Stafford County.
This event this year is virtual, but the need is real. We hope that you will join us in this campaign to fight food insecurity in our community with your monetary or non-perishable food donations. Thank you for your time this evening and your continued commitment toward our band programs and community.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I know that there will be lots of people listening in, so thank you so much for making the effort to come this evening. You all look really smart in your uniforms, so thanks for coming. Next on our agenda is our explanation about our Stafford County Public Schools' data dashboard. I believe Mr. Cook will be leading us in this presentation.
in order to improve outcomes for our students. Transparency is important because there's power for change in this, excuse me, in this information, and our stakeholders need to know. I do want to caution everyone, all stakeholders really, that access to the data carries a responsibility. Be thoughtful. Dig a little deeper and be sure you understand what the data are telling you. So I had a good experience with this recently. I was pulling some information and noticed that Algebra I in eighth grade had a little dip, and I was like, well, that's not good. But we dug a little further, and we noticed that there was a large increase in geometry in eighth grade, with actually overall more students taking advanced math in eighth grade than there ever has been. So be sure you're seeing the whole picture. I know I've made that mistake, and I don't want other people making the same mistake because there is power in this data. And of course, we're always working to protect the student data. There are three parts to the dashboard. There's the strategic question, which is the area that answers the question we are focused on as a district leadership team. The internal dashboard has individual student data and is only available inside the secure SCPS network. The internal dashboard is for school and district leaders to make decisions with, as you might imagine. And then the public dashboard has the same charts and data as the internal dashboard, but does not disaggregate the data below 10 students. That's a big, important thing about student privacy, right? So parents in the community will be able to see data by schools, grade levels, and all the various reporting categories. So a little more detail about the strategic question page. This page is the data analysis that we're taking action on as a district leadership team. The answers to these questions are developed by a program evaluation team of Doctors Towery and Shuts in coordination with the instructional team, including Dr. Strike and Dr. Jones. The strategic question section is on both the internal and the external pages, so it'll be available for everyone to see the same things we're seeing, you know, as an aggregate. So on this page, you'll notice the continuous improvement logo, and we have it on this page because that's what the internal dashboard really is for when it comes down to it. Leadership can use the dashboard to inform their decisions and monitor the impact of those decisions. It's not really intended for a single event or a single report, but it's used as an ongoing tool for improving the outcomes of our students. It really is a journey of continuous improvement. The internal dashboard has individual student information and can be used to show their performance and compare with the various reporting categories. Access to individual students' information is limited to those staff with a direct instructional purpose for that student's information. Like, if I'm a teacher at one school, I can't see student data from another school, or a principal, or what have you. So a quick story about the public dashboard. I presented the original public dashboard to Dr. Kizner back before winter break, and I'll just say the dashboard needed some continuous improvement of its own, and it needed it in a hurry. So we started working on with Who Knew It to redesign the database for the public side, and so it really is the same as the internal dashboard for the inside, except without the individual student data for that security. So in other words, the two dashboards are as close as we can make them and protect student privacy at the same time. Okay. So this is their timeline. The redesign is nearing completion, and they're rebuilding the database this week, and they should be done by the end of this week. Next week, the website is being built, and we'll be doing security testing the week after. In fact, it coincides with their Department of Homeland Security audit that they're doing for us, and the Who Knew It dashboard is going to be part of that security audit. So assuming all goes well, we'll be launching the public site at the March 2nd public school board meeting. Okay. So without further ado, we're going to look at the strategic question, how to use the filter that'll be on the public dashboard and the internal dashboard, how the charts work, and then a little bit about interpreting data. So let's jump on in there. Okay. So, let's jump over to, all right, so the strategic question, oops. Really, this is the one you guys have seen before, back in the fall, the same charts that we were looking at with Dr. Kizner at one of the school board meetings, and it's really the first quarter grades for secondary. Now, the report cards are still being finalized and stuff, so as soon as that's available, it'll be coming up on here as far as report cards. But then with the mid-year evaluation that's coming up in March, all that data will be in here too, so it'll be a much more full picture of what's happening. So the filter, you'll notice a little button on the side. That actually helps you pick out different areas of data you want to pick out. So the charts on the right will coincide with whatever you filtered the data on. So this first level is the student grades. Let me make that a little bigger. And I clicked on the second button that'll be available for everyone to just get a better picture of it. You'll also be able to download it as a PDF or however you want to get it. The current student diversity is set as a pie chart, and you'll notice, you know, we're majority-minority district. And we come down to see the changes over time, and if you highlight over the areas, it'll actually give you the raw data for those. And then down here, it's enrollment by school. So pick your favorite school. Let's make it bigger so you can see the numbers. Pick your favorite school, and we'll see what happens to the numbers. Don't tell anyone where your favorite school is, though, okay? So we go up to the filter, and we, let's say, I'm going to, I'm going to guess, so I'm going to pick one, the boys. I'm going to filter for just males. You'll notice that the little word male is right here, and it changes. I noticed 11th grade went down, it appears to have gone down a little bit. That's another situation where don't jump to conclusions, because if you look at the females, it's 1147, males and females, it's 1158. So it's really only 12 difference, although it looks like it's a bigger difference at first. So to get rid of the filter, you just click on the little X, okay? Very simple. This group, this list over here, the student subgroups, that'll be on, that's on the internal dashboard. It's not available on the outside, the public dashboard, because that'll actually pull up a list of students. So anybody want to pick something else? Let's do ELL. So one thing you can do with this filter is you can pick multiple things. So let's pick the ladies who are English language learners, and it actually shows both categories together and all the different parts to that, okay? Any questions so far about how the filter works?
I'll wait until you're done.
And of course, and we have the different subcategories or the recording categories. Okay, so let's go to attendance. So chronic absenteeism is a problem, and we know it affects student outcomes pretty heavily. So we have a pretty extensive page on chronic absenteeism, and this big chart here, our developers just built this today, as a matter of fact, and you can see trending chronically absent is anyone having 10% or more absences. Seven and a half percent to 10% is nearly chronic, and then, let's see, seven and a half to 5% is trending chronic. So you can see those numbers here by reporting category. So when principals get this, they can actually look at their individual schools and be able to tell which students, they can click on those numbers and actually pull which ones are chronically absent or trending that way, so they can take action on getting that without calling this up and saying, hey, I need a report on this. They'll be able to pull it right up through here. And let's see, we'll do academics, AP, IB, and we have the different charts for, by reporting category, for the AP dual enrollment and IB. So that's my presentation and how it works. Any questions?
Ms. Young, you want to start us off?
Sure. Thank you. I've been hungry for data for a while, so I'm so happy to see a dashboard. My first question would be, this analytical platform that you're showing here, do we feed it files, and then this is how you're getting the data, or are we using files from Virginia State? Like, which files are you using?
We're pulling data directly out of our Synergy student database.
And so with that, so with that, would we, so the data is dynamic, you're saying, right now?
Yes, ma'am.
So should we have certain times, would you give us like a legend, like when we have to pull it to be like new data, or is it just always whatever you see at that particular time?
Like, first quarter grades aren't going to really update, but like attendance, updates every night, whenever we have school.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
One quick comment. So we're starting off with academic and attendance, but as a school board, you know, is looking at questions that you want answered, like fiscal reports per building, as we're looking at the sixth high school enrollment and boundary lines. So it's not, my point really being, it goes beyond just academics and achievement, but we're starting off building on the achievement objectives, but I just want you to think, as you're developing policy and questions you need to answer, we'll work with you in creating those dashboard strands.
Oops, excuse me. Any other comments? Dr. Kizner, let me just ask, in general, going to enrollment, how we, can this be used to show somewhat class size? I know that's a difficult one, but especially as we move forward with some of the comments we've heard and going forward, do we think, and I know this may not be the first wave of where we're going, but do you think in the future it might be able to be used to sort of track class sizes and just something we need to keep an eye on, especially even with our class size reduction, all of those kinds of things? Can this tool, and it doesn't have to be today, but as we move forward?
Yeah. So I think the answer is yes. I think the challenge is, goes to both of your questions. We have to populate it, and then we have to have a system in place that keeps it updated, okay? So if a child moves into Shirley High in sixth grade, that we have a system that goes through Synergy or any of our student information management systems that exactly puts that child in the classes and makes sure that the information is dynamic and accurate. But I absolutely see that. Jay is saying, I'm glad you see it. Now, we just got to make sure we have the infrastructure staff to do that, which is part of the budget that you guys talked about on Saturday. is part of the budget that you guys talked about on Saturday.
I appreciate that. All right. Any other comments? If not, thank you, Mr. Cook, for your presentation and for all the hard work that's gone into this. I know this has been a labor of love for trying to get this get this accomplished. All right. Our next presentation, I know, will be with Mr. Fulmer, bringing us our midyear financial update, which we do annually. We did not do it in January because we had several other big items of a financial nature. So this seemed the right evening to bring this forward. Mr.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Kizner. As Ms. Turman Hazard said, typically probably would have been last month, but with everything going on with the budget and returning to school, we pinned this meeting to provide a midyear financial update. I'm going to provide a summary of where we stand with our federal stimulus money that we've received over the past nine months. Also give an update on our revenue and expenditures and our operating fund. And lastly, based on some of the discussion from the work session on Saturday, added a couple of slides on some of the other big funds and where we stand on those for this fiscal year. So first, on our federal stimulus money, I broke this into a couple of categories. One for the funds that came directly as a as a pass through from the county. So if you recall, we've come several times to the school board to approve large categories of purchases. Some of those were funds requesting use of the funds that the county received from the CARES Act. Then additionally, we received funds directly to school divisions and SCPS from the federal government. So on the top left, you'll see the different resolutions approved by the Board of Supervisors totaling a little over $7.2 million. The right is the categories of where those were spent. I'll just run through them quickly, at least the larger categories. Back in late May, early or sorry, late June, early July, there was about $1.1 million in Chromebooks. That was the first big purchase we did to get to one to one. Also had lots of supplies, so cleaning supplies, hand sanitizer, masks, thermometers, face shields, the touchless thermometers, gloves. That was the 1.3 and an additional 100,000. Also purchased the Kajit units and some other subscription items that to provide internet access for students across the division. Supplementing the YMCA Virtual Learning Center for Staff Children through December 31st. We purchased $1.5 million in air purifiers, one point almost 1.7 million for additional software, digital textbooks as we went to a virtual environment, needed additional licenses for much of our software to make sure it could be expanded to be used at home by all children. On the kind of on the same path there, we had some at-home materials and consumables, so hard copy items that we needed to send home, workbooks that normally could be worked on at school or shared between students that each student needed their own copy, and so that was purchased to go home. We also increased our HVAC filter replacement schedules, so that required additional additional air for air filter pierces, air filter purchases. And we upgraded the the Murr filter that we were using. Additionally, we had train come in and look at our units and do some some work on the air filters themselves, like replacing gaskets to help with the actual quality of the air filters. And then additionally, the last item that the school board approved funded by the county was some hourly compensation. There was some plan amendments to IEP's 504, some additional training for teachers on on Canvas that was done over the summer, and that totaled about 350,000. So you'll see that of the 7.236 million approved by the Board of Supervisors or passed through from the Board of Supervisors, that was all spent, and there are no funds remaining. So to the the funding directly received by the school board given to school divisions across the state, at first, in the May-June timeframe, we received $1.5 million. That 1.5 was allocated based on Title I funding. And then additionally, later in the school year or once the school year got kicked off, I think it was August-September timeframe, we received another $5.2 million. Excuse me, that was actually much later. I think it was October-November timeframe. And that was primarily used for classroom technology and air purifiers and bus purchases. The first $1.5 million were used for targeted right away for learning loss over this past summer and going forward through the school year, and we identified five nurses to to have throughout this school year to help with temperature checks and and contract tracing at the schools, mainly the high schools. So I want to point out that we have $1 million, a little over $1 million remaining, but that is specifically from the batch of money that was for learning loss remediation that are allotted our high schools, actually, all of our schools, elementary, middle, Dr. Kizner, the chiefs have all been working on plans with the schools. They've already many of the schools have already kicked off those plans. So we've already spent some of that money in this past summer, and it's continuing on this school year. And as Dr. Kizner has alluded to in his presentations, it will be something that's going to be going forward this coming for the rest of this school year, this summer, and most likely next school year. Want to point out that late December, early January, we got the official notice we were to receive another $6.3 million in the newest act signed on December 27th. This goes back to an allocation based on Title I. I wanted to point out, and to go back a slide, the 5.2 that we received later in the in 2020 was actually based on like a hybrid of Title I and enrollment was the initial projection, and it ended up, I think, based solely on enrollment, which you received a large much much larger allocation. For the December 21st act, the CRRSA, it was based on the Title I funding. For us, for Stafford County, actually, based on enrollment and not Title I is a lot more advantageous to us. But either way, we received 6.3 million or had been allocated. We have not received it yet. It's going to be on a reimbursement basis. We've talked about this in Dr. Kizner's budget. We talked about it at the Saturday work session where we've identified funding between 2.5, $3 million each year of FY22 and FY23's budget of the increases that we've incurred because of COVID. The easiest example I give that we've already touched on our air filter replacements, the air filters for the air purifiers. That's the recurring item, but it is still eligible for the federal stimulus money because we have those air purifiers in order to to get our students back into the classrooms. So I kind of broke that out there just at a very high level for FY22 and FY23, and then additionally, taking the another 530,000 and allocating that towards learning loss for this coming year.
Before you move on, Mr. Fulmer, let me see if anybody has any questions about, let's do them maybe by section so that are there any questions or comments about the first section regarding CARES Act and other funds? Okay. Hearing none. All right. Let's go on.
High level overview of our operating fund first for our revenues. The biggest change here is with the governor's proposed budget and waiting for the General Assembly to act on that. If you recall back when we adopted our FY21 budget, we set aside $3 million because we didn't know what sales tax was going to look like in FY21. I didn't know what our state revenues were going to look like overall. So not only did we reduce our ADM, which reduced our state revenue, we also took $3 million of that and set it aside and said, we're not going to allocate this to an expenditure yet. Let's wait until we see what happens with our state funding. Well, the governor has come out, and not only their forecasts are looking positive, they've also said they are going to hold schools schools harmless, so they're going to have no lost funding. So they're actually funding us at our original enrollment prior to prior to COVID and prior to reducing it in our FY21 budget, which was over 30,000. So that does two things, and not only increases our state budget by 2.4, but it guarantees that the 3 million we set aside, we will receive that. So it has a big swing in our our revenues of where we stood when we adopted our FY21 budget to what it looks like we will be receiving from the state. Additionally, we do have a couple of areas where we a little bit more of uncertainty. We have Medicaid reimbursements from federal revenue that just is going to take longer into this year before we really are sure what that's going to look like. We usually have a million, million and a half from those Medicaid reimbursements. And we have other miscellaneous revenue that could be facility rentals. We know we're not renting out of our facilities right now. It's not safe, and there's other items in our miscellaneous revenue. In total, projecting a net increase over budget and our revenue of 4.1 million. Also started looking at what our projected savings are for this year. We're seeing a big reduction in our fuel costs for the beginning of the year, still projecting that for the rest of the year. We feel like we'll have about $500,000 left on our fuel line. Also started to to pull the apart pull the departments and kind of get a feel for where do they think they're going to have savings at the end of the year. I think a little over 500,000 there. Based on our our substitute and hourly wage compensation or payments expenditures predict that we can have $750,000 in savings there by the end of the year, plus our substitutes of approximately a million. That includes our teachers, our bus drivers. And then looking to expand the the children virtual learning subsidy through the end of this year at a cost of 300,000. I want to point out that for the for our payroll, our fuel and our substitutes, these are items that we're still going to monitor. So in total, real quick, as I'm I'll circle back, it really comes up to about 6.6 in total, you know, additional revenue, some projected savings on the expenditures, have a net surplus of 6.6. But our expenditures, there's still a lot of the year left. So we just started the second semester, and so we really need to watch not only as our transportation gets back to full tilt and not only that, even additional routes and what we would have in a normal year because of the social distancing taking places on the bus as well. Today was that first day that they have the secondary children back, and we just redid the route. So we really need a couple of weeks to see how the routes are going to play out, how what that impact is going to be on fuel and additional hourly and potential overtime for our drivers. We're monitoring our salaries and laps. I told you all every year I've stood up here that really March and April is when we can really start to get a good feel for that. Definitely May and June with how our total contracted salaries are going to be at the end of the year. We're going to review our substitute pool and pay. It's something HR has been challenging with, the schools have been challenging with of maintaining an adequate substitute pool and whether we need to provide an additional incentive to our substitutes to attract them. We're enhancing our attendance incentive for drivers and attendance to make sure we have adequate drivers available each day. I told you, we're monitoring that overtime for drivers as well as the fuel for our bus routes. And as I mentioned before, everyone across the division is working on plans for targeted remediation and learning loss. And then additionally, as we get closer to the end of the year, looking at three R projects that we can use the surplus. Other funds, these are are very high level and good information, good news. I just wanted to tell you that it looks like our school nutrition fund is going to be really close to breaking even this year. It's going to depend on on our meal turnouts for the rest of the year. The first chart really just shows our totals meals served through the December 31st of each year. So you'll see breakfast and lunch combined was 1.8 million in the prior school year. And this fiscal year is about 1.2 million. If you look at our revenues, obviously, they're down from 6.7 to a little over 4 million. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be short 4 million because a lot of the and the nutrition fund is driven off of the meal costs. So as your revenues go down and your meals are going down, we're not buying as much meals. So we've projected that out to think we're pretty close to breaking even in our school nutrition fund. Health benefits, I wanted to include this just because this has been a big topic for the last couple of years and trying to monitor to make sure we don't have large surpluses in our health benefits for the last since I've started budgeting the health benefits fund, we budgeted a lot closer now, so we haven't had additional savings there. It's really just savings that were carried over in the past. So through December 31st, we've had a surplus of $350,000. Health benefits is going to fluctuate month to month, but I feel really good about where we stand right now. And just showing you year over year, the comparisons for our infant claims through December 31st, 15.8 million and 15.9, 0.96. So really close comparison from year to year for our medical claims. So with that, I will turn it over. I know we already broke for questions once, but if for any other areas you have questions, I'd love to answer them.
Any comments, questions?
I just had one question. About the substitute teacher, is that also including the monitors that are sitting in the rooms for teachers that are maintained virtual? Okay.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. All right. Next, we're going to move on to our public comment section of the meeting. We will have in-person comments this evening. We have two items on the agenda is one is our public hearing on the FY22 budget. This is required by law, and any speaker who would like to speak on that is allotted two minutes. Just for the board to know, we did not have anybody sign up for the public hearing on the FY22 funding request. So I will move on from that to just our general public comments this evening. Each speaker is allocated two minutes. They will come in. We will go in order. We have six people signed up this evening. And what we will do is I will recognize them, then they can get start start speaking. And I will just go ahead and we'll get started with our first speaker I have as Maureen Sigmund. And to all speakers, I apologize if I mess up your name. Please correct me when you come to the podium.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Glad to be here. I'm Maureen Sigmund. My husband and I live in Austin Ridge, which is Garrisonville District. Our children attend Anthony Burns and Rodney Thompson, and they will go to Colonial Forge in just a few years. I am so glad to see, you know, with the start of budget discussion, we're talking about the 2021, 2022 school year. I know that teachers are being asked about coming back, but I want to see when parents are going to be asked what their plans are. I would like to know that the school board and the administration is considering a full time open for next year because I feel like enough's enough. Our kids are just are done. This is what my school year has looked like for my children. I have a second grader who is being tracked for advanced skills, who cannot be screened for services because of COVID. He is a second grader that should receive the universal screener. That's not happening until next year. He can't even get an individual screen at parent request because of COVID, and he is an in-person hybrid student. So we are going to basically lose an entire year of services. I have a fourth grader on IEP who is just barely not regressing. It is an incredibly frustrating virtual problem. She could not get to her program today because she could not get the login to work, which fourth grade girl ended in tears. I have a seventh grader who made the school basketball team this year. Their last game was today, and the middle school she played was unable to stream the game. My husband and I have been watching the games from our car on a phone or a tablet because we're not allowed in to celebrate with our daughter, to succeed with our daughter. Her academic program has been doing okay, but these are the things that our kids are giving giving up. She had an abbreviated season playing abbreviated games with nobody there for her, which is basically the story of her educational experience. She is shortened time, shortened education, alone. I want the reassurance that we are looking at a five-day reopen. I want a parent survey. I want to know that parents have the option to send their kids full time. I totally get if we want to have a virtual option as a a safety measure for kids who aren't ready to be back. I would love to see an opt-out for transportation. I know transportation is always a huge issue, even on a non-pandemic year. We are a bus route house. We are not a bus route family. I have never put my kids on the bus, and I know those seats could go to somewhere else where those minutes can be made up somewhere else. So I think just by default, allowing parents to opt out of transportation might be a great way to save some resources on transportation and eliminate that. way to save some resources on transportation and eliminate that burden. Thank you.
And if you have additional comments, feel free to go ahead and submit them.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephanie Mojica or Moika, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Mojica and I am in the Garrisonville School District. Children as a whole have been significantly impacted. They are failing academically as well as being damaged emotionally. They will not academically recover if not resolved and schools continue to stay this way. There needs to be a better solution. Teachers and administration at my children's elementary school have been wonderful, but I feel they have been limited by restrictions due to virtual and the protocol that has been set in place. Speaking for myself, I was pleased with the education my kids were receiving prior to virtual. Inside Nova News, Governor Northing and other experts indicated that schools are safe. Governor also said it's critical to, critical to prevent greater learning loss and to support our children's health and wellbeing. In the Journal editorial report, it stated that CDC said there is little evidence and low risk of spreading COVID-19 while in the classroom with safety measures set in place. Precautionary measures have been implemented to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 in Stafford schools. Private schools as well as public schools have followed with precaution and opened full-time successfully. Until schools are fully open, schools should be extending classroom hours gradually to build up to a full class time schedule proceeding to open full-time. My kids going twice a week for three hours is equivalent to preschool education in terms of hours of teaching. Speaking for my children, virtual learning did not work a year ago and it has not effectively worked this year for them as they continue to struggle with it. Many students are faced with the challenges of virtual. Majority of the time, they are not engaged. They cannot connect through a screen. They are more motivated in person to learn than through a Chromebook. Sadly, I feel at the expense-
Ma'am, I need you to wrap up.
Almost done. Sadly, I feel at the expense of our children, the school system is failing them. Your responsibility as a school board is to make sure that our children are properly educated, which I feel has not been done. Virtual learning has caused anxiety and stress in many households.
Ma'am, you need to wrap it up. I'm sorry.
The mental health of our kids is 10,000 important as the academic part. Please consider adding additional hours to, to personal learning.
You may certainly submit your comments to us. Next, I have David Stahl.
Good evening. May I take this off? Okay. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, my name is Dave Stahl. I live in the Garrisonville District and my kids go to North Stafford High School. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. What brings me and others here before you this evening is that you hear from your parents and your taxpayers that the children of Stafford County School System returned to normal classroom instruction. Allow me to define normal since I fear that it has changed. In person, my child is in a classroom with a teacher. In person, in the school, in person. A teacher in the classroom, in the school, where they can raise their hand if they have a question, where the bandwidth or canvas doesn't prevent or present yet another hurdle to learning. Sadly, there's been a tortured partisan interpretation of nebulous health data that has strangled any hope of a sober, logical and sustainable plan to return to school. I would ask that the school board present a plan for in-person Monday through Friday schooling for the county well before August of this year. I understand your teachers association will soon become a teachers union. In doing so, the county will look to taxpayers, the parents for more money. The school board's failure to quickly resolve this will only bring a cold and skeptical response from your taxpayers. Ben Franklin wrote, "Tell me and I forget, teach me and I remember, involve me and I learn." The teachers who are in attendance this evening may recognize the name Dr. Todd Whitaker. Dr. Whitaker is Professor of Education Leadership at the University of Missouri. The guy's written 50 books. He says the best thing about being a teacher is that it matters. The hardest thing about being a teacher is that it matters every day. I'm confident you guys will figure it out.
Next, I have Corey Harmon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time. My name is Corey Herman. I'm from Garrisonville. I have a daughter in the first grade at Moncur. There's increasing data to suggest that schools can safely reopen and that safe reopening does not suggest that teachers need to be vaccinated. Vaccinations of teachers is not a prerequisite for safely reopening schools. That's the CDC Director, Dr. Rochelle Olensky, as of this month. I lose sleep overnight. Well, not every night, but I lose a lot of time in sleep thinking about how my daughter's being deprived of learning how to interact socially with other humans. Her appetite for learning is deteriorating. She only gets three hours, two days a week to go see folks in person and learn those fundamental social skills that she's going to need and depend on for the rest of her life. So right now, I wish I was more educated in where the shortcomings are for providing this opportunity for our children. And I'm just on the assumption that we all want and should want to return to normalcy for our kids. We have the clear from the CDC to do so. Right now, we are in our current model and I think we've gotten slightly complacent with that current model. We have the opportunity to improve now. We have that green light. We can see, keep the same mitigation measures, masks, distancing, sanitation of surfaces. And from my perspective, we can achieve at least 50% of time spent in schools with those mitigations. Now, I want to be solution oriented. I could go down and talk about how alcohol, liquor stores are open, they're essential, but education in person is not. If it's a matter of transportation, let's survey the families, you know, let's identify a number of drivers that we need. And, you know, that's going to entice the people to start stepping up and actually creating solutions so we can make this happen before we accept the budget. I think we owe it to our kids to have a plan to get them back into school.
Next, I have Betsy Sonier. Oh, I'm always happy when I get it at least somewhat close.
That's wonderful. I go by Betsy. Thank you. And I want to thank you for your time tonight. I live in the Garrisonville District and I have two children, a sophomore at Colonial Forge and a seventh grader at Rodney Thompson. And my purpose here today is to implore you to open up the schools full-time for in-person learning in the fall. I would love for the schools to have both a virtual option, which is already in place, and an in-person, not a hybrid, but an in-person option. Since the beginning of school year, I've watched my children's growth decline in many ways. My sophomore is normally an AB student, but now she's struggling to keep her grades above an F. Oftentimes she can't and her mental health is deteriorating. Her grades frustrate her and she finds it nearly impossible to pay attention during virtual learning. I think there's like a six-minute window that you've got before you lose your audience. That's a lot to ask a kid to do. So understandably, there are a lot of distractions at home that you wouldn't find in the classroom, but I think the worst of all for her is the isolation. So sorry. Okay, so a large part of the children's education that we're teaching them is the social environment. In kindergarten, we're teaching them to get along with each other. And by high school, we're teaching them to collaborate and work with each other and they'll need that skill in the real world. So my daughter's taking an AP class that requires her to communicate with other students. It's a group project and she's never met these other kids. So she has to FaceTime with them or they can text each other and her grade literally depends on this communication and it's extremely difficult. And at this point in her life, she's supposed to be leaning on her peers and in developing strong relationships with them and learning to, oops, I'm sorry, leave the nest. And then going into the school year for my son was, it was pretty difficult. He had a technology addiction going in. I'll just wrap it up and just implore you once again to open up the schools full-time for in-person learning in the fall. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Sonier, if you have some more about your son that you'd like to share with the board, please feel free to send it to him.
Well, I actually would, if you don't mind.
No, I don't, I need to, I want to make sure I'm the same with everybody for our two minutes, but please submit that to our clerk. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I was just going to say that you had a technology addiction going into the school year.
Well, no, ma'am, I meant to, if you would write that up for us, like your notes, if you could send it to them.
Oh, I'm just sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Because we want to make sure we get that information, but I also want to be mindful of giving everybody the same amount of time.
I so appreciate it, but I've already emailed this to all of you.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much. And next we'll have Kate Sonier.
Good evening. My name is Kate Sonier. I'm the student of the last speaker, or child of the last speaker. I just want to make sure all of you know, from a student's perspective, how important it is for you to open up the schools, both full-time, hybrid and online, keeping it open. As my mother stated, my mental health has been declining all year since the beginning of the pandemic. I find it is important for me to be in a school environment and see my peers every day to ensure that I'm learning the proper social skills. I'm a very social person and online environment does not allow me to flourish as much as I can. So I've only made one friend through school this year. Normally I'd make about 10, 20 new friends. And I think that says a lot about what online school is doing to the students in their social lives. It is an important part of being a teenager and a child that a student is allowed to make friends and learn social skills from others. And if we are not able to do that, then we are not going to be able to survive in the world as adults. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. All right. We have gone through all of our public comments. I'm just making sure over there that there is no one else. Okay, thank you for confirming that. So I will close public comment and we'll move on to our board committee reports. Are there any board committee reports? Anyone? Ms. Young, let me just see if anybody else has one. Is that okay? Just in case. Is there, Ms. Randall, you want to start us and then Ms. Young will come? Are you ready? Do you know what I'm doing? Okay, thanks.
Okay, I would like to, we had a governance meeting and in it we were discussing a possible retreat. And one of the things that I think is a unique position of this current board is that we have board members with 20 years of experience, eight years' experience, one year of experience and a very seasoned superintendent. And I think with a body like this, it would be very helpful for us to be able to come together and establish norms and protocols, goals for both ourselves as members and our division. The SBA, because we are required to take and do learning throughout our, every year, they offer growth opportunities. I know Mrs. Young shared with the board, the SBU courses, some of them are free, some of them you pay for. You can earn different, a standard certificate and an advanced certificate. There's also opportunities for the board to earn distinction awards, academy awards. There's all different ways for learning. Also, don't forget to look at the National School Board Association for information. And we talked about doing a spring project similar to the one we did in November, but this one being outside, working with staff as well as the elected board to do something for our schools. So if you have any thoughts or ideas you'd like to share with the governance, appreciate that. And the last thing was, we mentioned that we have outdated school board policies and Lisa Boatwright is in the process of reviewing those policies that are out of date or need to be updated. And she will bring it to the governance and we will bring it to the board to discuss at our next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Young.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. In terms of the legislative update, the team of Virginia is making the students a priority, a top priority actually, for going back to school. And there is an increase in students' behavioral problems, mental health issues. Doctors are writing more prescriptions for depressants and there is a decline in academic performance in Virginia. So students need to be in the classroom. This is from Dr. Northing, our governor. And, you know, I've always agreed with having the students in person, especially K through five. The Virginia's new guidance is to have a safe return for in-person learning to get the students back into school by March the 15th with a non-mandatory summer school option. You know, I don't mind all-year school. Don't send me no emails. But data shows that there is no rapid spread in the schools, but there is a reminder here that Stafford County in-person never stopped. I just want to ensure that we continue with our safety plan, our COVID plan, and that all the students abide by the same rules to support all students, all teachers and all support staff. Have another committee update. It is from the Gifted Advisory Committee. We met February the first and they're working on their presentation. They wanted to make sure that they're going to be able to present in person and if the dates, we could start getting some dates together for their presentation. So I mentioned that I would share that request with you all. Would love for them to be in person also. They're working very hard and I'm not going to disclose what they're working on, but it goes in line with equity. And those are the two updates I have for committee updates. Thanks.
Thank you, ladies. Anybody else? I'll give a quick update that we did have our joint schools meeting last Thursday. The schools presented cost data for high school six. It was detailed information, which was shared with all board members as well. So I just want to make sure that you all have seen that information for review going forward. We felt that it was a positive discussion and presentation of where the figures are coming from and backup for those figures as well. Secondarily, just a report from the fine arts, fine and performing arts, of course, tonight when we had our drum majors here. I would just like to still put out the invitation for student involvement on our advisory committees. I have always found, I know you all have some, our fine and performing arts has some great student input, so this is just sort of a plug for everybody to encourage students to get involved because this is a great way for their voice to be heard. All right, moving on to board member comments. I will take volunteers. Who wants to start? Ms. Healy, start us off.
I'm taking this off so I can be articulate. I want to note that the speakers here tonight came from one district, but they could very well have come from any of our districts. We're all hearing from parents and community members and I particularly applaud our young student who, you know, had the courage to come and talk to us because the issues that they're facing are facing almost every one of our students and our families. So I would like to certainly set as a goal for this school board to return to full-time school for students to choose with certainly a consideration of extended virtual if it's called for because of health-related reasons, but as a choice for families, if that's a possibility for the next school year. But I would also like to ask if Dr. Kizner could look into extending the face-to-face schooling for our current school year. I'm very happy that we're having our middle and high school students come back. I mean, it seems like eons ago rather than, what, six? I mean, it seems like eons ago, rather than, what, six or seven months since we made that decision. But I have to agree with these parents. Six hours a week is what our children were in preschool. And they're not in preschool anymore. And I would also like to ask if we could get a report on how many students are actually in the classrooms. You know, when we set this up for the two-days hybrid, two days in school and two days out of school, it was with the understanding that half the students would be there on one set of days, and the other half would be there the other set of days. But if, in fact, half, or nearly half of our students are electing to stay with virtual for the year, then hypothetically, there's one-fourth of our students in the classroom two days a week, and one-fourth of the students in the classroom the other two days a week. So we had to do this so that we had enough space, you know, to allow the students in the classroom, which is why I understood we cut it in half. Now, I understand that transportation is going to be an issue, but I think the parents tonight had a good suggestion. You know, let's do that survey. Let's see if some parents, or guardians, or caretakers would commit to opting out of the transportation. You know, we have an obligation to offer the transportation, but if people are going to choose to opt out, then that may permit us to transport more students to school. So it's something that I would like to look into. I mean, we have half of the school year left now, and I don't think it's too late to look into, you know, whether we can have more hours in the classroom. So I very much appreciate the speakers that came, and I think they speak for parents and caretakers all over this county that want to see the kids back in school, as well as the students. And actually, many of our staff who are very happy to be back in the classroom. I mean, we hear from people that don't want to be back, but I think we're also hearing from people that are happy, and they're glad to have that contact with the students. So if we could get some of that information, I know this is a very busy time, but I would be interested in knowing, you know, how are these classrooms filled? Are they, in fact, you know, filled to the maximum so that we couldn't add students if we chose to? Or if we're having half the students come in face-to-face, then it would appear that there should be a possibility to have them in more than two days a week. So, thank you.
Ms. Hollerback?
I'm going to actually defer my time to Dr. Kizner, because I agree with Ms. Healy. But I'd like to know what, given the governor's, you know, concurrence that everybody needs to go back to the classroom, what our options are from a perspective from the CDC, the governor's office, all of the things that make this whole thing up. So I'm going to stop talking so that he can talk a little bit more about that, so we can all learn a little bit more about what our options are.
Dr. Warner?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the speakers for coming in and sharing their stories. And I agree with Ms. Healy. I think we could ask any parents and any teachers in any of our districts and hear similar stories. Dr. Walensky at the CDC has said that they would like to see the schools open, but she's also stressed that it requires masks, it requires social distancing, which means de-densification of our classrooms so that we can accommodate students. But, and hand washing and cleaning, which we are all doing. We are, we are working, I think Dr. Kizner and his staff have been working extremely hard to meet those requirements to get our students back in school. And as a matter of fact, students went back to school today in the classroom. The middle school students returned. Our freshmen in high school returned. We are working to get kids back in school because we recognize how important that is. I think that it would be nice if we could make promises and say, yes, we will reopen the schools full-time in the fall. But unfortunately, we can't make that promise until we know what COVID's got in store for us. So we are working for that goal, and I just want everybody to recognize that we do understand the toll this is taking on our students and our families. Thank you.
Ms. Randall?
Good evening. I really did appreciate listening to those parents. And I will say, last week, I got to visit Dixon, Rocky Run, and Stafford High School. I wanted to see concurrent teaching, so that's why I was at Rocky Run. But I also was able to see the prep work that was done for Dixon and Stafford. Today, I got to actually be at Stafford when they welcomed their students back, and it was amazing. The ninth graders came in so excited, but what was so funny was watching them come sit in their seats in the cafeteria. And I know all the high schools doing it differently, but Stafford, they're sitting in seats in the cafeteria, facing in one direction, and it's like watching an awkward sixth-grade dance. They all sit there very quiet, not sure what to do, and then here comes the teachers, just like a blessing. They come and they start talking and interacting with the kids, and all of a sudden, the kids are coming out of their shells and whispering and talking, and before you know it, you just hear this student buzz, something I really, really have missed. I got to meet their new SRO, Deputy John Harrod, who is beyond excited to be there. Their former SRO was promoted, so she is no longer there. And he brought me in to see his office and tell me about his plans and how he's already been at school. He knows the populations there, and he just could not wait to actually make connections. That's what he's most looking forward to. And he was a bubble all over the place. He was really fun. I got to tour the whole school. Some classes had one student, two students, some had several. I got to see the concurrent teaching. I walk into a room, a kid had forgotten a Chromebook, they were on a walkie-talkie, a Chromebook showed up before I walked out the door. It was just outstanding work on the kids' part, the staff part, administrative part. It was really exciting. So I hope that all of us get a chance to go in and see an elementary, a middle, or a high school, because happy hybrid day to the middle and the high schools. It's really fun.
Ms. Young, would you like to go next?
Thank you, I was doodling for a minute there. On January the 22nd, I visited the Quantico Cyber Hub and learned about Cyber Bites Foundation. Our invite was to Winding Creek Principal Becky Harlow, who they donated computers to for their STEM program. This was post-COVID. I wanted to invite Becky here for an update so that everyone could hear about how her elementary school works while working with the high school as mentors. I was joined by Dr. Stan Jones, Assistant Superintendent, and my friend, also Board of Supervisors for Garrison Villamark, didn't have her. This generous donation from these companies, HDT Global, Cyber Bites Foundation, and Digital Kids helps Stafford County schools widen their robotics and STEM programs. Dr. Jones and I plan to meet again to discuss this program further. Our tour guide at Cyber Bites is a graduate from North Stafford, Jonathan Payton. There is an excellent opportunity here to create revolutionary methods to provide valuable STEM education for our communities, rising innovators. Innovators, excuse my accent. One more. So there's also call for volunteers for summer camps over the weekend, but even a more significant opportunity to have an ongoing relationship to mentor our schools in robotics and artificial intelligence from elementary onto high school with opportunities for scholarships and jobs at graduation, because that's what we discussed. I would like to see other elementary schools hook up with Becky. Thank you, Becky, who offered her expertise to help other elementary schools such as Park Ridge and others to have this type of program if they don't yet have one, and have mentorship infused these companies and our high school STEM programs. On January 28th, a few board members and I met to discuss performance report, and today we had a dashboard presentation. So we also talked about initiation of another committee. I was interested in status of system capability to produce reports and the current performance report and types of performance needs such as disparity, educational gap reports, and discipline reports. So I'm glad to see that that is on the horizon. I already talked about the Gifted Advisory Committee earlier. On February the 2nd, I attended the Chair and Vice Chair orientation. This was scheduled from last year, so I went ahead and attended, and I shared the information via email. Thank you, Missy, for printing that out. I'm sending it on to others. On February 3rd, we had a joint working committee, and I'm only going to talk about, I know my chairperson already discussed it, but one of the topics that are of interest to both boards is my discussion points were on equity and equality and getting both boards working on topics of interest to the community together. So we have a large community of non-white taxpayers, so since both boards have a diversity equity committee now, perhaps both working together on a community event in the future would be nice. In terms of the performance meeting, I don't have any more readout on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
So I would just like to echo my fellow board members' comments that we absolutely agree with the parents who've come in, that we would really love to have more school. But I do understand that we are just starting to sort of open up our middle and high schools, and it's an opportunity to pilot what's going on, to see what will be possible in the fall. So I hope we will be able to perhaps increase K through five since they've been there for a while, and see what we can do with the upper grades, understanding that it is dependent on COVID. I wanted to say that the Commonwealth Governor's School Governing Board Committee, I had not mentioned that governor's schools get evaluated every five years, and the governor's school asked to be allowed to wait till next year because of COVID, and that request was declined. And so CGS will be evaluated this spring. And then I wanted to note that I did get to visit Drew Middle School prior to the opening and see all of the very hard work that members of our staff at all the middle schools and high schools have been doing to get ready to bring students back as safely as possible. So I was happy to see that. And then finally, just on a Black History Month note, I just want to make sure everybody knew that the Moderna vaccine was developed by a black scientist by the name of Kizmekia Corbett, black woman educated at public schools. So just thought I would mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just some final thoughts. I think all of the board members, I think I speak for them, we have heard the stories, and many of us have talked to parents and students. We would like to get back to normal, but normal may look different. And I think that the board is very committed to offering the best experience that we can within the parameters and within the limitations that we may have. Please remember, and I, we will be looking into, or I hope that we will be having staff look into the ability to opt out of transportation. We have to see how that can work, whether that will work. But I will say, you know, having buses with a third of our students on there, on them, is a challenge for us. I know that it is not due to not wanting to be in the school. Parents want their kids there, kids want to be there, and staff want to be there to see their students. I believe we are trying to work through, learn as we go, and not have to regress that we've gone too fast. I, too, have a student who is not in public school here anymore, but both two in university, and it is a very different process. I wish for them to have a different experience. So I do hope that as a community, we can come together and come up with solutions and have support from our community. One of the things that the board discussed at our retreat, or, well, our budget retreat, as I'll call it, on a Saturday morning in this room, was what are we, how are we going to react? One of the big things in our budget is talking about counselors somewhat, how to react to learning loss. This is very much a part of next year's budget discussions, and going forward, we are hearing you. I will say, I do believe that the social worker area is an area I want, we may reexamine, but we hear you. We do believe that the students will come back, and there's going to be a lot more needs, and we do want to meet them. And so we are looking at that in our budget and going forward. On a end-up note, I'm probably fairly of broken record on growth, but it is also about class size. I truly believe that best learning happens in smaller classes, but that has to be also something that is asked for and requested by our constituents. And the way that that happens is that we are going to need space. We are going to need buildings going forward. We are not getting smaller, and we don't know what restrictions will be coming in the future. Will we always be at six feet? Will we be at three feet? We may not sit like we used to. So I do believe that the community needs to think about that and examine. We do need space, and we may need buildings sooner than we did before in order to offer the kinds of services in person that we would like to offer. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Kizner.
Thank you. Before I talk about today and next week, I do want to go back in time a little bit, okay? It's been somewhat interesting to hear people say, "We open up today," or, "When is the schools going to open up?" And I just want to remind us that we never closed, that Stafford County Public Schools never closed, except for that one snow day I did close the schools. I will say that for safety. And I just want to remind you that in the summer of 2020, we started by having a full Head Start summer school program. And on August 31st, which was our first day of school, as we adjusted the calendar, we brought in children with disabilities. We brought in children who are English learners, and we offered at all of our schools the internet cafe. Soon afterwards, we transitioned to a, on October 13th, a K pilot program, which helped us better understand how we could meet the needs of our K-5 elementary students, which we started on October 27th. At that same time, we opened up, we still had the middle and high school EL, special needs and internet cafe children, but we then opened up CTE programs for our high school students and keep expanding on that area. And then today, as you know, we started the face-to-face hybrid for our sixth through ninth-grade students, and next Tuesday, 10th through 12th grade. 15,727 families, this is pre-K to grade 12, requested hybrid. That's 53% of our student population. So for every family that asked for their child to be at school at minimum two days a week, we have a lot of kids in schools, three, four, and some children with special needs, five days a week. But for every parent that requested, 53%, which means 47%, still want their children in a virtual learning model. After Tuesday of next week, they will be in our schools. I also anticipate, if today, today was a very positive day. Those who have a chance, and I know some of you going other days this week or next week, that we will actually see that number expand. The people, the families that spoke tonight, I don't think there's anybody that disagrees. There's a very, it's more than aspirational goal. It's a goal that we want to work towards, but I don't want to be dismissive that we are in a pandemic. want to be dismissive that we are in a pandemic. And what we've been saying from the beginning is, we have to allow the science along with the best instructional practices merge. And I think in many ways, we have done that effectively. And one of the ways we've done it is by following the CDC and VDH guidelines, which is six feet social or physical distancing in the classroom. Although I will tell you that the American Academy, American Pediatric Academy, does give you the liberty to look at three to six feet. So when you're looking at school systems that are bringing children in for more than two days, you will see that one of the common threads that they are moving towards is less than six feet, but not less than three feet. Okay? I would agree. And so today, I had an opportunity to hear two presentations, Isle of Wight, which is a school system in the Tidewater area, a little bit over 5,000 students, and Chesterfield Public Schools, which is over 60,000 children. Isle of Wight have been back to school really since the beginning. Chesterfield started, and then they stopped, and then they started again this week. But they're just at the elementary level. But they are moving again to bring more children into school more than two days a week. And they are going to tell their community that it's going to be possibly three to six feet. And why that's important is because if somebody has COVID, then we will have more children that will have to be isolated or self-quarantined. Okay? But I will say the other thing I heard, and you heard the speakers say this tonight, and I heard many of you say it, is a partnership with their community about transportation. Not one school system that I have spoken to is not doing it the way we're doing it, one child on a seat. No one seems to be sacrificing that rule. So in order to get more children in, transportation is a barrier unless we could work with families who have the ability to drive their children to school to do that. Okay? But that's a conversation we need to have and be very honest with our public if we want more children to be in. Well, I'm not even sure if the question is more, because 47% of the families are saying, right now, I'm okay with virtual. But it may be a greater amount of time for the 53% that have selected the hybrid. Now, saying that, we have already started a process of targeting, and I say this only, now, this may be considered aspirational, but I want to go, is to look towards the fourth quarter, to look at elementary, to bring those children into school more than two days a week. Now, you received an email from me today, which I'm a big fan that we learn from each other. And what a beauty we have of having 17 elementary schools. And I think the pilot program of Kindergart helped us learn from each other. That some of our schools are already beginning that conversation on how can we bring more, how could we provide more instructional time face-to-face for our families and students that have selected hybrid? So Ms. Neely is working with her elementary principals, and I don't have a date in mind, but we will present to you a plan when we really feel like we have a plan that the public could hopefully understand and embrace. Okay? There's also middle schools that are talking about, if we're able to, can we? And the answer for me is yes. You know, I'm not going to say no if we're following the health mitigation strategies and best instructional strategies. Now, I do want to say what the governor really said. Because back in October, we met the governor's March 15 goal. What the governor said, he didn't call me, but I heard him, okay? But what the governor said was, I would like school systems, at least by March 15, to make sure your children with disabilities, your children who are English learners, and your elementary children are back in school. Well, we have already met and exceeded that goal. To me, it was a very low bar. I do want to read something that you may be familiar with these school systems. And I am not, my colleagues, if they're watching this, are going to say, he is such a not a good person. But they're going to say something else, but I'll just say that. Fairfax, Loudon, Prince William, Virginia Beach, Chesterfield, and then RICO. I left out Chesapeake, because I mentioned to you last time. All those school systems are larger than us. None of those school systems have anyone except early elementary back, and some are just working on that. So I only bring it up, not to be competitive, but to bring context that every school, no, I'm not really being competitive, but to bring context that every school system is working with their community to try to bring children back in a safe way. But we have been committed, and I applaud all of you, to follow the plan. Okay? To follow the plan that was adopted on July 28. But I would agree, it's time to look at, can we expand it now? Okay? We met the first semester, we just entered second semester. Can we now do something to give our students more face-to-face? And I think I've been pretty clear, that's always been my unwavering vote. Okay? So I am totally committed to that process as long as we do it safely. So one of the things that the school board will eventually have to address, this notion of three feet social distancing and transportation. Now, sometime this week, supposedly, it was really supposed to come out last week, the CDC is going to have updated guidance on returning to school. So we're hoping, you know, that'll come this week to help provide us guidance, because the Virginia Department of Health, they typically just rewrite the CDC guidelines into their guidelines. So that will be very helpful. But I just need to say one last thing, and then just talk a little bit about the vaccines. I do want to make sure that there's a lot of recognition to our staff and students that have been doing the virtual instruction. Because although I get it about the social emotional, I get about the, I don't think anybody would ever say that, at least I wouldn't say, that virtual could ever replace the power and the relationship of a teacher. I would never, ever say that. But I also would say that our teachers who have been doing virtual since end of August have done a phenomenal job under very difficult situations. And many families and many children have benefited, but many children have not been doing as well as we hoped. Okay? And we're constantly looking to improve upon that. But I don't want to be dismissive of the 47% of the children that are learning virtually. Okay? It's a choice their family's made, and we're honoring it. So we will come back with a plan. We are already in that conversation. I know Ms. Neely met with her elementary principals today, and there's three or four schools that are very excited in that term pilot and looking at things. So everybody, I think, is on the same page. Colette is here, but I'll just mention that 66, two-thirds of our staff, and these numbers fluctuate, please understand, but about two-thirds of our staff, and this is including substitutes and anybody that has contact with our students, have requested a vaccine, the shots. Matter of fact, today, when I walked around, I didn't realize, many staff were telling me they got their second shots already. So we're seeing that progress. And last time, we reported about 500 people. We're still waiting on four appointments. Again, Colette is correcting me, everybody else does, that we're probably down to like 140, 150, and that number might even be lower. You know, it's right now, a lot of this is communication between the hospital and the individual. So we're moving fast in that. I will say, it is true, the CDC guidelines have stated that that's not a prerequisite, but it's still a, I think it gives comfort for our staff that want it. And I'm glad that we're beginning to see the first group get their second shot. And I think next week, we're going to have a much larger group getting their second shot. So anyway, today was a great day, and I heard many, many teachers say, this is where the kids need to be. And this one little girl at Pool Little School, who I really didn't know, she acted like I knew her. I probably knew her. I probably took a picture, put her on Twitter and stuff like that. But she did come up to me and said, you know, I don't know how to really handle this. But she said, it's about time you allowed me to come back. And I said, I said, well, thank you. I'm really glad you're back. And but she was sweet, cute as a button. So anyway, we'll come back with a plan to, not necessarily for August of '21, but for the rest of this year. And then I think late spring, we'll be in a better position to understand what the summer and then August will look like. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Next, we're moving on to our consent items. Please remember, there are two consent items. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Consent?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Does it, in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The two consent items carried unanimously. We have no action items this evening. Information item 12.01 was the consideration and discussion of the funding request. I believe that our time spent on Saturday, we may have covered those. Remember, one of the things that we did request is if there are any additional information requests or to please get those to our clerk by the end of the week. And
I send them directly to Dr. Kizner.
Excuse me?
If I send mine directly to Dr. Kizner.
Okay. And then we can group those so that we may have discussion next Tuesday night at the budget work session scheduled for 6:00 PM. So please keep that on everybody's calendar. That would be here. And then we have a, any further questions or comments about the, excuse me, FY22 funding request?
Madam Chair, I thought that was a placeholder for next Tuesday if we needed it. Is that a definite now? Did that change since Saturday?
I believe so. I believe there's been several sets of questions submitted by board members. They haven't, I was just getting an update on that this evening. So they will be shared with all board members.
Will that be before next Tuesday?
Yes.
Thank you.
So please send them as quickly as possible.
Yes. Madam Chair, I have a question. I think, I don't know what date I saw, but I saw, I don't know if this is what Ms. Neely is asking, but I saw the date, the tentative date that we have on hold, but then we also, there's also the same date as an approval of the budget. And so is that stand? Is that still good?
Yes. What we were thinking is, the next Tuesday being the 16th, we will have that meeting, and then hopefully, a shorter meeting before, on the 23rd, before we go into approval. That was sort of our discussion there, is trying to make sure that we, if possible, work through as many of the issues on the 16th, so that the 23rd, if we had any changes for Mr. Fulmer, hopefully, they would be minor, so that then it would be easier for an approval that evening. If that works out, certainly, we can see where we are at the end of the meeting on the 16th. Does that make sense? All right. And then we have, as our other information item, which I believe became 12.02, I'm sorry, I didn't refresh my screen, was the approval of individual purchases greater than $100,000 previously approved in total using federal dollars funded by the CARES Act. Dr. Chase, any questions? Sorry, I'm just going to send my questions to staff between now and when this comes back. Thank you. Okay. And if anybody else has any questions, and then this will be on for approval at the, in two weeks, in two weeks. All right. Hearing no other urgent business is this evening. Again, next Tuesday, the 16th, here at 6 o'clock. Please submit any questions as quickly as possible. And then our follow-on board meeting will be February 23 with a work session and regular meeting. If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.